The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
This is an interview scheduled for 6:40 PM. My name is Pauline Cormier. I am the Chairwoman of the Ways and Means Committee. The other members of the committee are Frank Ardinger, who is our clerk, and our third member Todd Deacon. With us tonight is Margaret Stevenson. And this is an interview from Dean Jay Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Peggy Stevenson to the Recreation Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Welcome, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you for having me.
Ms. Stevenson, this is just the opportunity for us as a council to get to know you. I have a copy, and I believe everybody has a copy of your resume, so welcome. What I'd like to start with is just to give you the opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and why you're looking for this position.
Okay. Hi, my name's Peggy Stevenson. I've resided in Lemonster for 32 years. My husband and I moved up here when we got married, raised our kids. They went through the Lemonster Public Schools. I am currently an ESL teacher for the Lemonster Public Schools for grades one to five. I worked for the Recreation Department for 13 years, leaving in 2018. I enjoyed it very much, but it was just time for me to move on from that position. When my kids were younger, I volunteered at all their sporting events, soccer mom, band boosters when they were in high school. I coached AYF cheerleading a few years ago with the twist of an arm of a very good friend of mine's daughter. I don't know anything about that, but I went and I did, and I had fun with them. I was a development coordinator at JCD when my children were younger and went there for a few years. So I ran all their big functions, their golf tournaments, their grandparents' days, all their book fairs and everything. So that's all. And I've lived here for 32 years, I think I said, yeah.
Thank you. So you left the Recreation Department in 2018?
Yes.
And have you had any interaction with them since then?
I have. I see them. I talk to them. I've talked to people that are there. I see the kids at work. They're still, they still call me and ask me for references and help with stuff that they do. So yes.
And what do you expect some of your responsibilities to be?
To help oversee the Recreation Department, to help them with their parks, their recreations, their fields, their programs that they run, their basketball thing, just to help them and guide them in the right direction to help them out.
Okay. And you said you're ESL teacher?
Currently, currently at Fallbrook.
At Fallbrook. So that with the Recreation Department would also be very helpful there, I suppose, as well?
Yes. Yeah, because when I worked for the Rec Department, we used all the schools. We used Fallbrook. We used Sammasett. We used all the schools as our campsites. So...
And that would help you to new students?
Yes, to get students and come in and help out, yes. I still have people asking me about all their programs, even though I've left there, and I still get them their forms, sign them up, help them get where they have to go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there anything that you hope to, obviously, the Recreation Department and all the programs are getting back from the COVID?
Yes.
And then trying to get back to normalcy. Is there anything in particular that you want to bring to the Recreation Department or anything that you want to see started up again?
Yeah, probably just get them back to their full potential that they had, get the kids back there, make sure everybody knows that they're safe to come back to the camps, and just have their field trips going, let them go to the pool swimming, and just the normalcy of everyday life again with them.
Okay.
Because I know it was tough the past couple of years with the kids. Now, you could only take a certain amount of kids. Some kids were, you know, couldn't go because of that. And people understood, but we need to make sure that they understand that we're full open again and everything's going to be okay.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Ardinger, the clerk of Ways and Means, if he has any questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stevenson, I met you briefly in the hallway, so nice to meet you again.
Thank you, same here.
As a member of the Rec Commission, what would be your number one priority for the Rec Department? What direction would you like to see them go into? Just normal, you know, building back up. Is there something new that you would like them to do?
Just building back up. And then as things, as we see, look at other Rec Departments and see what they have to see maybe if we can bring something to our department and see what happens from there. But I think just getting it built back up again because of the past couple of years we've had is, would be my top priority.
And obviously, your experience as a teacher in various capacities is going to help you tremendously because
Yes.
You've been working with children for how many years now?
I've been in the School Department for 17 years, maybe?
17 years.
Yeah, I started as a parent, then moved to a tutor, then moved to a teacher.
Okay, great, great. I had looked over your resume before. I've been quite honest, I'm very impressed. I think you'd be a great addition to the Commission. And I do have one comment. Leslie University, my daughter graduated, so that's a plus, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And Counselor Deacon, did you have any questions?
Yes. Look, thank you for coming tonight, Peggy.
Thank you.
Obviously, we know each other.
Yes, we do.
Looking forward to having you help all the kids in the city.
Thank you.
And get things back up and running. It's been a long two years with the pandemic.
It has.
And I will fully support your appointment.
Thank you very much.
If that's all, it from Ways and Means, I'd open it up if there's any other members of the City Council that have any questions. Counsel Frida?
Hi, Peg.
Hi, Claire. How are you?
Good. Just curious, what do you see as a vision of Lemonster Recreation? What would you like to see happen?
Like I said before, like bringing everything back to normalcy and then maybe adding some of the things in that were there a long time ago. So bringing back like the, they used to have people come in that would help the kids with soccer, have the sports people come in for a sports day with the kids, go out on their field trips. The kids really like that. We used to have all the animals, people come in with the animals and have all that, bring that stuff back in. But slowly, because we have to get back into the, you know, the swing of things of everything. So...
Is there anyone else?
I just, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you very much for volunteering. There's a great group of people there on the Commission to work with, which I'm sure you know.
Yes, I know.
Most of them, yes. So you'll fit right in and continue the good work that they've been doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other questions. So Ms. Stevenson, I'm going to thank you for coming in. And if you would like to stick around a little bit, I believe, Mr. President, if it's okay with you that maybe we could move up this vote earlier during the course of the meeting.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we do have a few hearings, one of them at 6:45, 6:47, and 6:49. I will be stepping out for those. And Counsel Frida, you may proceed since Counselor Shalfo Zephyr is not present.
Hey, this is a public hearing, 6:45, 42-22, before the Lemonster City Council. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, Incorporated, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Nashua Street, National Grid, to install one jointly owned pole on Nashua Street, beginning at a point approximately 180 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Nashua Street and Lawrence Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction, installing P-32-50 with 40-inch C2 to provide service to 280 Nashua Street. Whereas, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herein marked Nashua Street, Lemonster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. My name is Claire Frida. I'm the clerk of public service. And Counselor Bill Brady is the third member. Is there a representative from Massachusetts Electric?
Yes.
Or National Grid, I should say?
Yes.
If you could come to the mic, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Will Fontaine, and I reside at 56 Terra Lane in Monsocka, Rhode Island.
Is that microphone on? I don't know. I've got a cold that I'm not hearing yet.
Yes, I can talk a little louder if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
So yes, that is one of the petitions, I believe. There's four tonight. But yes, on Nashua Street, we'll be putting in, hopefully, pole 32-50 to supply power to number 280 Nashua Street.
And I know I'm going to defer to Counselor Brady in a minute because it is his ward. But can you just give us a background as to why you're proposing this?
Right. So there's a number of poles in the area from P-32 to P-33, P-34. The only problem with putting, the only problem with those poles is we needed to put another transformer to be able to feed that number 280 because the other transformers were already overloaded. We like to keep, you know, we kind of have a saying, one pole, one purpose. All the other poles in that area already have existing infrastructure on them. And for the safety of our linemen, we don't like putting more things that clutter up a pole. So that way, if they ever need to work on it, they're not getting too close to the overhead wires. So we're putting in this new pole to put a new transformer to feed number 280. So that way, we're not over-cluttering other poles in the area.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Brady, I'm going to defer to you.
Yeah, just a quick question. The work on Prospect Street.
Counselor, could you speak into your microphone?
Sure.
Here we go. Thank you.
The work being done on Prospect Street by the T Station, which runs parallel to Nashua, they put in four large distribution boxes. Is that all tied in?
I'm not aware of that project. I think that's a different designer.
So that's not part of?
It's not part of this proposal, no.
Okay.
This is strictly to feed number 280, so.
There's a lot of work going on down there. So that's why I just wanted to clarify.
That's that, Counselor?
Yes.
Any other councilors have any questions or comments for the petitioner? Madam Clerk, I'll just ask you to verify that the legal notices were duly noted.
Yes.
I will go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of 42-22? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of 42-22? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of 42-22? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 42-22? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 42-22? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 42-22? If not, Madam Clerk, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, Counsel. 42-22, public hearing is closed, and we are right on time for public hearing 43-22.
43-22, Mass Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Grandview Avenue, National Grid, to install three jointly owned poles on Grandview Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 20 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of View Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in the northeast direction. Install pole number 4-50 and anchor on the northeastern side of Grandview Avenue between existing poles three and four. Continue 125 degrees northwest and install new pole number nine and two anchors on the northeast side of View Street. Continue 105 degrees west and install new pole number 10 and anchor on the northwest side of View Street. New poles are required for electrical service to three new homes being built on new section of View Street. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Grandview Avenue, Lemonster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Okay, I will go to you again and have you give us a summary of exactly what the purpose of this request is.
Right. So as was stated, there's a few new houses going up on View Street, which is a fairly new street. And so in order to get power to those new houses, we need the infrastructure to put the overhead lines up and then run power to those dwellings.
And that's not obstructing or interfering with any existing residence properties?
No, I believe pole, let me see, pole nine is on the, is next to 37 Grandview Ave. But if the, I believe you said there's guy wires going on those. If the guy wires remain on public property, then it shouldn't impede. But if it does, we always seek out easements when any of our, any of our infrastructure goes on anyone's private property.
So you have no resident complaints or?
No, no.
This is View Street. Is that, that four? Do you have any, any questions or comments on it?
I do, actually. Thank you, Counsel. So this is a brand new section of street, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
I didn't think there was any way in there.
From the research I did, I'm not the designer who worked on this project, but from what I saw, I looked on Google Maps and everything, View Street didn't, wasn't really there a couple of years ago, but they extended it around, let's see, numbers 59, 53, and 47, Grandview Street. It wraps around. So it is brand new.
Yeah. There is an existing View Street that extends from Exchange Street to Grandview Ave. This has to...
Right. So this is an extension of that around, yep.
Counsel Brady, do you have any questions or?
No, no, I'm good with it.
Any other councilors have any questions or comments? And again, I'll defer to the clerk that the legal notices.
Yes.
Okay. I will go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of 43-22? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of 45, 43 or 45?
43. 43. 43.
43.
43.
43-22, for the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of 43-22? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 43-22? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 43-22? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 43-22? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Okay, we're just gonna wait a minute and start the meeting, and then we'll go back to the other hearings. We've got another minute. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Lemonster City Council for March 28, 2022. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
The flag is to the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemonster City Council, beginning with Counsel Badanta.
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counsel Ardinger.
Present.
Counsel Angelini.
Present.
Counsel Brady.
Present.
Counsel Deacon.
Present.
Counsel Frida.
Present.
And I am present. Madam Clerk, do you have any records to approve this evening? Madam Vice President?
Mr. President, I did. I did have the opportunity to review the minutes from February 28, 2022, and March 14, 2022. I find them to be in good order. And unless any of the council has any issues, I would ask that they be placed on file.
Okay. If there's no issues, we will place those on file. At this time, I will ask Counsel.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Just trying to find, and I think I have the right minutes. We had to pile them here. Under public safety, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr recused herself from this petition as she's one of the petitioners. I would think she recused herself, not because she's a petitioner. Counsel Cormier is also a petitioner.
She owned property there. She owns property there. She had stated as well.
Right. So she didn't recuse herself because she's one of the petitioners.
Right. She recused herself.
That's the only thing I was correcting.
Because she owns property and a business there. So that needs to be corrected.
Don't have to state why, but she's, I mean, you have two petitioners, so.
Right. Thank you. No, it's a good point. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, they will be placed on file. And at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion for a recess. Counsel Badanta, do we have a second? Counsel Ardinger, all those in favor of a recess so we can continue the hearings, signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero. You can continue, Counsel Frida, with the other hearing.
44-22, public hearing before the City Council. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Field Road, National Grid, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Field Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Abbott Avenue and Field Road, and continuing approximately 15 feet in the south direction. Relocating pole number one with 40-inch C2 approximately 20 F west from existing pole one. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herein, herewith, marked Field Road, Lemonster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. So I will defer to you again for an explanation as to what the... Well, I will defer to you again for an explanation as to what the purpose of Field Road is.
Yeah, so the pole there, pole one, is, is being replaced, it's being taken down, and the location is being moved up the street a little bit. Basically, just taking care of our infrastructure, that pole is pretty old, I believe it was put up in the 50s from what my research showed, and then we're replacing the transformer on the following pole, I believe it was overloaded, so we're just, we're taking care of our infrastructure, making sure that people there have power. So that, that's about it, it's basically just, we were there, we were replacing that, replacing the transformer anyway, so we figured we'd just kind of clean up the area a little bit and make sure everything was safe and up to our current standards, as the new pole is gonna be a little taller, a little thicker than the last one, it's, it's a little safer.
So are you doing these because you have requests, or is this a normal course of updating and repairing and replacing?
Mostly it's by request, so sometimes we have people who are putting in, they'll upgrade their service, a lot of people only have 100 or 200 amp services, and they want to go up to 200 or 400 or more. So we need to make sure that the wire that's feeding their house is up to date, make sure that the transformer that is feeding their house can handle the extra load, or, a lot of, a lot of transformers are overloaded, and so any, or they're right at the cusp of being overloaded, so any, any added load would put them into an unacceptable level of, of being overloaded, so that, that's probably what this situation was, again, I wasn't the designer on this job, but that's probably what happened in this case.
All right, thank you. I will defer to Council Brady.
Yeah, that old pole, I believe, had a street light on it. Will everything be transferred to the new pole exactly the same?
Yes, everything, everything gets transferred, they basically, they put in the new pole, and then they, they just transfer everything over, so all the different hookups, connections, and, and the street light will be moved as well.
Will they change the streetlight to a, a newer version, a little more energy efficient?
Let me see.
Or can we suggest they do that?
I can, right now, this just says that they're gonna transfer, transfer the light, I don't know, they might, to keep up, again, with, with current standards, that might just be reinstalling a brand new one, that's, again, like you said, more energy efficient. If you'd like, I can take your information and get to.
Just for edification, in a project the city did a few years ago, we switched all these out to LEDs, and they're actually ours, so that should be an LED light.
Okay, so in that case, if it's already at the current standard, it will just be transferred.
I just heard him say 1950, and I was afraid that we were lighting the torch.
Councilor Angelini, that's your word, I believe, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you, Council Frida. Mr. Fontaine, is a house under, a new home under construction on the corner of Field Road and Abbott Ave, so I suspect this pole might be, the upgrade to the transformer might be to accommodate that new home.
That's, that's probably the case.
All right, thank you, thank you, Council.
Any other councilors have any questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in support of 44 dash 22?
Good evening, councilors, Greg Chapter Lane, 8 Field Road, I am the homeowner building the new home, and everything this gentleman just said, I can support, that was what was explained to me, for all the upgrades, for the electrical service for that house, I initiated the petition, it also needs to be moved, right now, it sits almost directly in front of the house, it needs to be moved, as well as the upgrade, while they're doing the upgrades, because we're gonna move it, and the, the initial reason for moving it was to move it to the side of the house to facilitate the underground conduits to make the electrical connection, because right now, it's right in front, and otherwise, I'd have a meter box sitting out my front door, so that's basically what started this, and then it is old, and they need to make the upgrades, there's some actually wires and things on it that don't belong there that's gonna remove, and it already is LED lights in that area, so, thank you.
So we need to make sure you have ample electricity for when you do work at home?
That's correct, or else I can't buy things for the city, so, you know, I strongly, you know, encourage you to vote for this, thank you.
We want to make sure that's covered, then. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of 44 dash 22? For the third and final time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of 44 dash 22? If they're not, if not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 44 dash 22? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 44 dash 22? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, 44 dash 22? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll declare the public hearing closed. You have one more?
I can, I can participate in that one.
Oh, okay.
Verizon's not in it, thank you.
Forty-five dash 22, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pioneer Drive, National Grid to install one single owned pole on Pioneer Drive, beginning at a point approximately 815 feet north of the centerline of the intersection of Orchard Hill Park and Pioneer Drive and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction, installing P-12 with 40-feet C2 to provide service to 130 Pioneer Drive. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Pioneer Drive, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways to the purposes of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Distributing purposes, your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
So this, this pole is gonna feed a new business, that's gonna be residing at 130 Pioneer Drive. I believe pole 12 dash 2 is going to, which runs off of pole 12, pole 12 is gonna be on the public way, pole 12 dash 2 will be on the 130 property, so we'll be getting an easement from them if we don't already have it. We're putting up a new transformer, again, one pole, one purpose, so this, I mean, we need to get the power to, to 130 Pioneer Drive. If we didn't have pole 12, we would end up having a, an aerial crossover from 148 Pioneer Drive, so that would be, basically be an infringement upon their property, and so we're putting that, putting pole 12 further down, and then cutting right across the street so we don't have any aerial trespasses over anybody else's land, and then, and we're putting a new transformer on that pole 12 to feed, to feed them, because the only other transformer in the area is a three-phase transformer, which is not what, not what they need.
Thank you. Council Brady?
Just clarification, I'm a little confused on our page number 148 and 149, our two plots, one is labeled Nashville Street, one is labeled Pioneer, I'm sure it's just a typo, but next to 148? May I?
Use the one with the Pioneer Drive, it's the most updated one, we had to go back and forth.
They both say Pioneer Drive, that's why, it's from there.
Let me pull up the most recent one, because we had to go back and forth with National Grid and the assessor's office for that.
Sorry.
The same designer worked on both of those, so he might've, might've had a typo in the original.
That was in the original, and this was submitted later.
Okay. Thanks, asked and answered. No one questions, I believe that's gonna be the feeding for the marijuana facility.
Okay, any other councilors have any questions or comments? And this again was posted, legal notice. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of 45 dash 22?
Clear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all, that's all right, thank you, Council. Mr. Fontaine, again, this, since this is an industrial park, the fact that, I mean, three-phase transformers are quite common, right, so this is sort of a strange circumstance, isn't it, when someone's building an industrial zone without three-phase availability?
Yes, so again, I, I'm not sure all the technical details of, of this project, but if we don't need to put up, obviously, three-phase transformers, they're more expensive, we're, our job is to try to provide power at the lowest possible cost to our customers, so if we don't need to put up a three-phase transformer, we don't, we won't, because again, it's more expensive, more material. This is a 75 KVA transformer, though, which, that's a good amount of power, so that's, the equipment being, three-phase is more when you have lots of machines going, motors and, but I don't believe, and you said it's a marijuana facility, I don't believe they'll have many industrial motors going, if any, so they won't need the three-phase power like most, when you think of industrial parks, that they're not gonna need that type of power.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that Council?
Yes, thank you, Council Frida.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of 45 dash 22? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of 45 22? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 45 dash 22? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 45 dash 22? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of 45 dash 22? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Okay, thank you, Council Frida, we are now gonna hold the public forum, the public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the city council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe, the council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given, there is nobody that has signed up this evening, so I will ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? Please, once again, state your name and address for the record.
At this time, I'm appearing as Greg Chapter Lane, purchasing agent for the city of Leominster. I did not realize that Ms. Stevenson was going to be here this evening, but I believe when the moment arises, you should give commendation to those people who do good jobs for the city, and I can say that I've worked with Ms. Stevenson for many years, not in the last several years, but I've worked with her for many years at the Recreation Department, and in fact, she worked under me for two programs I used to run for the Recreation Department for a long time. A very good worker, a very good person, her heart's always in the right place, she always has the Recreation Department's best interests at mind, and since I was here tonight and met up with her, I haven't seen Peggy in several years now, I can't say that I would recommend her any higher to be on the board, I think you'd be making a good choice, so, again, I, I think commendation is, is due publicly for those people when the moment arises, so I'm all for Peggy.
Thank you, Mr. Chapter Lane, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Once again, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed, we will now be back in session, and it is with a lot of sadness that I had to put an item on the agenda this evening. As everyone knows, we lost one of our, one of our own in a very tragic accident. Marine Captain Ross Reynolds was very active in the Boy Scouts when he was a kid, and did a project behind the Veterans Center to earn his Eagle Scout, I remember that when I first got on the council, probably some 10 or 11 years ago, and then he went on to be a Marine, and very sadly, lost his life in Norway, as everyone knows, it's been all over the local and national news. He has yet to come home, but will be coming home soon, so at this time, I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence for Marine Captain Ross A. Reynolds. Thank you all very much, if anybody knew the family or knew Ross and would like to say a few words, they may. Otherwise, I'm Council Frida.
You see, most of us that have been going to veterans programs for the past 20, 30 years, he was a young man who was always front and center with the flag for every Boy Scout function, Twilight Services, downtown, Veterans Day, and the auditorium, he was just such an all-around wonder, I think Rick, Rick Votor said it perfectly, he's, he's what America and Leominster is all about. He was a good kid growing up from a great family, and it's just a loss that I don't think any of us can understand, and certainly, our thoughts are, are with the family, and I know when his body comes home, you'll have the same, the same reception that Jonathan Roeburg had and Private Dufresne had, and make our city proud and make the family proud, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Frida. Okay, seeing no one else, I will move on to communications from the mayor, we have some reappointments, Madam Clerk?
May I take the reappointments and block?
You may, if there's no objection.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of Wendy Weeks, 142 Blossom Street, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of Vicki Briggs, 62 West Street, to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of David Cormier, nine-year run, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of Marcel Ledger, 74 Buttermilk Road, to the Housing Authority, term to expire April 15th, 2027. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of Carol Vittorioso, 19 Water Street, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15th, 2027. And Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests a reappointment of Salvatore Tricconi, 12 Celestial Way, Pepperell Mass, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15th, 2027.
Okay, and these appointments are gonna, or reappointments are gonna be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means. Council Cormier?
I apologize, Mr. President, C dash 60 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
No, no, these are the reappointments, I think they're given, they're given regular course.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, regular course in all of those, sorry, I jumped ahead of my notes.
No, no, no problem, no problem.
Yes, they'd all be given regular course, please.
They'll all be given regular course, and we, there's no need for any, I'm sorry? No interviews, yeah, because they're reappointments, okay?
Correct.
All right, moving on to C dash 60, Madam Clerk?
C dash 60, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $10,000 to be made to the Wire Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C dash 60 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
C dash 60 has been given regular course, C dash 61.
C dash 61, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an interdepartmental transfer of $2,200 to be made to the Police Department Police Chief Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Police Department Lieutenant Salary and Wages Account.
And C dash 61 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Same circumstance, first time on the agenda, regular course, please.
C dash 61 has been given regular course, C dash 62.
C dash 62, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the city council authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to finalize the conservation restriction easement on watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Rec. watershed property to the Department of Conservation and Recreation regarding, this is part of the city's acquisition of Troland Farms in 2001, and will finalize the terms of the conservation restriction, and has been reviewed by the city solicitor.
Okay. And C dash sixty-two will be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, referrals to Conservation Commission, and the Watershed Warden, Mr. Paul Kennedy, and I'd like to invite Mr. Kennedy down for the public hearing, and I'd like to schedule a public hearing, if I may, with the clerk.
What is?
A public meeting?
Yes.
Sure.
Do we have, does this have a public hearing?
Not a hearing.
It's not a hearing?
It would be a meeting, an informational session.
An informational session, okay, okay. Do we have a time for April, is it the eleventh?
How much time would you like to give him?
Thirty minutes.
I would recommend six-twenty PM on April eleventh, 2022.
Six-twenty, April four-eleven, okay.
All right, so that'll begin regular course, and that'll appear on our agenda for six-twenty PM. Madam Clerk? Okay, C dash sixty-three?
C dash sixty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $161,267 be made to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Overtime and Vacation slash Sick Buyback Accounts, the same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Account regarding to fund increased costs associated with contract settlement.
And C dash sixty-three is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C dash sixty-three has been given regular course. C dash sixty-four?
C dash sixty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the Snow and Ice Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C dash sixty-four is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C dash sixty-four is given regular course. C dash sixty-five?
C dash sixty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $175,000 be made to the Snow and Ice Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C dash sixty-five is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Regular course. C dash sixty-six?
C dash sixty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an interdepartmental transfer of $31,500 be made to the Police Department Captain Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Police Department Lieutenant Salary and Wages Account.
And C dash sixty-six is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
And regular course again, please.
C dash sixty-six has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda with forty-seven dash twenty-two. Madam Clerk?
Forty-seven dash twenty-two, Mark Gordon, on behalf of Music Mania, Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 14 Water Tower Plaza.
And forty-seven dash twenty-two is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President.
Forty-seven dash twenty-two has been given regular course. Moving on to forty-eight dash twenty-two.
Forty-eight dash twenty-two, Peter Angelini, Ward Five Counselor, request to amend the City of Leominster Revised Ordinances, Section twelve dash two, as attached. This amendment will take effect July first, 2022, regarding to revise the fee schedule in the City of Leominster to begin July first, 2022, fiscal year 2023.
And forty-eight dash twenty-two is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with referrals to the License Commission, Board of Health, the Planning Director, and Conservation.
Okay.
And we have a hearing established April eleventh, 2022, at six forty-five PM.
Okay.
Can we have a vote for that, please?
All right, and we'll have a vote. Council Frida, did I see?
I was just curious, who was actually the petitioner on this? Actually, it's under your name, but you're, the clerk is the one that filed the paperwork, so who's, who's actually the most concerned about this, or why are we, why are we doing? Is this something that you're asking for, or is this something you're asking for? I'm just curious.
No, I was the petitioner. I went to the clerk.
You are the petitioner?
Yes.
So this is you, okay.
I just helped him write it out.
Okay. All right, so this has been given regular course, and we are going to establish a hearing for April eleventh, 2022, at six forty-five PM. All those in favor of establishing that hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the hearing has been established for forty-eight twenty-two on four-eleven, 2022, at six forty-five PM. Moving on to forty-nine dash twenty-two.
Forty-nine dash twenty-two, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the solar ordinance, Article Three, Table of Uses, in Section twenty-two dash one oh four of Zoning, per attached letter.
And forty-nine dash twenty-two is also referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with referrals to Conservation Commission, Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals, DPW, and the Fire Chief, please. And as well, a public hearing, we have to establish a public hearing in May ninth, 2022, at six fifty PM.
Okay, so you've heard the request for regular course with a referral to the Conservation Commission, Planning, CBA, DPW, and Fire.
Correct.
And we are going to have a vote to establish a hearing on May ninth, 2022, at six fifty PM. All those in favor of establishing that hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the hearing has been established for forty-nine dash twenty-two at six fifty PM on May ninth, 2022. Moving on to matters before the City Council, Mr. Chairman of Finance, do you have a financial report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. We began the, starting with the report of the Stabilization Fund Activity. We started the fiscal year on July first with a balance in the stabilization account of nineteen million, nine hundred and four thousand, six hundred and two dollars. We added interest during the course of the fiscal year in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, and tonight, we are proposing to transfer back in money that we borrowed over the course of the fiscal year from the Stabilization Fund in the amount of three million, seven hundred thousand dollars, bringing the total of the fund to twenty-three million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. With all the transfers out, including those on our agenda this evening, we will have reductions in the amount of three million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, leaving a balance in the stabilization account of nineteen million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. As all of you have known from our doings in the past, one thing of primary interest to us from year to year is the certification of free cash or the establishment of our excess and deficiency account. Lesser known, that is approved by the state every year as our Schedule A, which is a review of all of our activity, revenue, and expenditures for the fiscal year. Actually, the comptroller suggests to me, to the state, that's a far more important document than the excess and deficiency account. Most recent Schedule A for, was approved by the state on March twenty-third, and I had the comptroller send part of it to all of you. The first page you got from the comptroller was a recap that she created, and then you got four pages from the Schedule A, and I know in the past that some of the councilors have been interested as to what is our total revenue and what are the sources? And what I had the comptroller send you was principally to suggest what our revenue sources are, where they come from, what they're made up of. And you'll see from her recap on page one that total governmental funds in the far-right column is a hundred and eighty-nine million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Property taxes and excise taxes raised from our taxpaying public amount for about eighty-four million dollars of that. In addition to the hundred and eighty-nine million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, there's another set of monies totaling about ten point nine million, which come from transfers from our excess and deficiency or stabilization account, as well as, as well as transfers from water and sewer. Last year, or this particular report, demonstrated a transfer from stabilization of six point nine million and an additional four million from water and sewer. So what happens when we close out the water and sewer, it goes into the excess and deficiency account, whatever's left over. That is an actual general fund account until we transfer it back into water and sewer, which is something we're going to actually do later on this evening. Last year, when this Schedule A was approved, we had really doubled the amount that we usually had because the account wasn't closed out right the last year before. So typically, that's two million. This year, it's four million, or for this report, it was four million. So that's how we get to the ten point six million dollars. So essentially, all of our revenues total across the board are just over two hundred million dollars. As I said, eighty-four million coming from property and excise taxes. In addition to that, fifty-seven million dollars comes from Chapter seventy, or mostly from Chapter seventy, forty-eight million of the intergovernmental transfer of fifty-six are just under fifty-seven million. Of that fifty-seven, forty-eight million is directly school aid, and the other rest of it is other state aid. There's twenty-two million dollars that comes for charges for services, one point eight million fees that we raise from fines, various fees, mostly ambulance fees. In addition to that, nineteen million dollars of that, twenty-two million dollars is from water and sewer, water and sewer charges, as well as school lunch fees. And then we have twenty-three million dollars from state and federal grants, as well as money for the city schools. That all totals one hundred and eighty-six million, so you get pretty close to that one hundred and eighty-nine million. The only thing that's not in this two hundred million is another twenty point four million. The vast majority of that money, twenty million dollars, is our insurance program. It's a closed account. All of that money comes from our collecting premiums, from our, the people on our health insurance, and all of it's closed into that account, used to pay for claims. We are self-insured, but we are managed by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and that's what that twenty million about, is about. The only other money, four hundred thousand dollars, is a distribution from the revolving account for our water, when this particular Schedule A was filed, which is part of a revolving loan account that was advanced, and that, ladies and gentlemen, is all of our revenue from every source that was approved in that Schedule A back on March twenty-third. So I figured I would just bring that to your attention. I know, like I said, we've had questions about it in the past, and that is a good encapsulation of what, where our revenue comes from and what it totals.
Okay.
And that is my financial report.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments? Council Frida?
That was an excellent summary of an update to explain that. I just, I just want to commend the new comptroller because, I mean, this is the infamous Schedule A that never got to the state in time to get free cash certified, year after year after year after year, which, and not throwing anybody under the bus or casting any aspersions, but, I mean, this is supposed to be done in a timely manner like it's being done now, and we should never have to wait for free cash a year from now, which is what we've been doing. So this is, I mean, it's great news, yet it's back on track. Schedule A is done, approved. Give a summary of where we are financially, and I just, I just think that we're really on the right track.
I will also note, for the record, that I did neglect to mention that she filed Schedule A the first week of January, so it does, you know, it does take the state a little bit of time to approve it. So I agree, things are being done, being done timely, and she's wonderful to work with, and I've been happy to take the opportunity to bring a little bit more information down here than just a recitation of the stabilization account.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or comments on the financial report? Okay, seeing none. Before we move into items under Finance, I'm gonna, we have a long fourteen-page agenda tonight, and I'm going to ask to jumble around a little bit. I'm going to ask that we, on page nine, under Ways and Means, that we take the appointment to the front of the calendar. Is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had the opportunity to speak with Margaret Peggy Stevenson, who was here, and she was interviewed with us. Ms. Stevenson did provide a copy of her resume, and you can see she's a, she received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Leslie University and a Master's of Education from Fitchburg State University. Ms. Stevenson has, is an educator, she's worked in the city, she's volunteered in the city, she's worked at the Recreation Department in the past, she's looking forward to coming back and helping the Recreation Department reestablish herself after the, now that we're getting back to a little bit of normalcy. She's gotten some rave reviews while she was here and during the interview and afterwards. So, Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we approve the appointment of Ms. Stevenson and ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Sure. Council Arndtjer?
I would certainly agree.
And Council Deacon?
I agree.
Okay. So it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant or confirm the appointment of Peggy Stevenson to the Rec Commission. Is there any other questions or comments regarding this appointment? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Council Badanta.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council Arndtjer?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Brady?
Yay.
Council Deacon?
Yay.
Council Frida?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. Peggy Stevenson has been confirmed to the Recreation Commission. Congratulations. Okay, now we're going to move back to items under Finance, beginning with C dash fifty-three. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C fifty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to accept the local transportation funding aid of one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation into the Highway State Aid Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. RE Chapter Ninety Budget Award for Fiscal Year 2023. As you know, each year, we go through this. Fortunately, our city has also been able to, the last couple of years, supplement the Chapter Ninety Grant with city funds to get some of our roads back up to grade, and this, of course, is the Chapter Ninety portion. And, Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C dash fifty-three, and I'll ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant C dash fifty-three. Is there any questions or comments, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash fifty-three signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C dash fifty-three has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents be made to the Sewer Department, wait a minute, wrong, wrong order. Don't have an order for that one, so that's all right. I can do it. Request, order that the sum of one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars be appropriated to the Highway State Aid for Receipts Reserve for Transportation Appropriation Account from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C dash fifty-four. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes. C fifty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents be made to the Sewer Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is the unspent portion of the Sewer Department Capital Account from Fiscal Twenty-One. As I mentioned in my financial report, this is now in the excess and deficiency account or general fund, and by this appropriation, we will be sending it back to the Sewer Department for capital expenditure. It would be my position to grant C dash fifty-four. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, so it sounds like unanimous recommendation to grant C dash fifty-four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash fifty-four signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C dash fifty-four has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes. Order that the sum of one million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents be made to the Sewer Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C dash fifty-five.
C dash fifty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of three million, seven hundred thousand dollars be made to- the Stabilization Fund, the same amount to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account, undesignated fund balance. As I previously indicated, during the course of the fiscal year, we borrowed from stabilization against this year's Excess and Deficiency certification, the sum of $3,700,000. By this appropriation, the mayor seeks to put that money back to the stabilization account, which we have done for the last several fiscal years. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-55. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Council Angelini.
And I will make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-55. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-55 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-55 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $3,700,000 be made to the Stabilization Fund, the same amount to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-55 has been adopted. Moving on to C-56.
C-56, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of $1,424,576.10 be made to the Water Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Again, this is the unspent revenue, I'm sorry, capital account of the Water Department from Fiscal Year 21, which has been certified as Excess and Deficiency and is now in the General Fund. The mayor is asking us to appropriate that sum back to the Water Department for use for capital projects. It would be my position, as it has been for several years now, with respect to this account, to do just that, and I'd ask you to check with my committee.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Council Angelini.
Once again, I'm in agreement, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-56. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-56 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-56 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $1,424,576.10 be made to the Water Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-56 has been, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-57.
C-57, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of $19,964 be made to the Lemmister Retirement System, the same amount to be transferred from the unfunded liability account. This is normal costs, and it is an adjustment that Peric made during the course of the year to what our normal cost is. Apparently, we were shy by this amount, so this amount, the mayor is requesting to be appropriated so that we can make our full normal costs. We have no unfunded liability anymore, as all of you probably are aware, the pension liability is fully funded, but of course, we want to keep up with our normal costs, and we need to make this appropriation. To do that, it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-57. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Council Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-57. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-57 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-57 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, I do. Order that the sum of $19,964 be made to the Lemmister Retirement System, the same amount to be transferred from the unfunded liability account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Now, moving on to C-58. I have to abstain from C-58. I do have an immediate family member on the Fire Department. My brother does serve on the Fire Department, so I will be abstaining. And before I do so, and throw the chair to the Vice President, I also have to abstain from 42-22, 43-22, and 44-22, as that equipment is partially owned by Verizon, my employer. So, Madam Vice President, I'm gonna throw you the chair, and I'm gonna ask that you handle all the discussion and voting for C-58, 42-22, 43-22, and 44-22. And then I will come back, and we will resume the rest of the items under finance and the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-58, to the Chair of Finance, are you ready to report?
I am. C-58, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Supporting the mayor's request for this appropriation is a letter from Fire Chief Robert A. Sidlo II. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the Fire Department requests a sum of $250,000 for overtime costs. I am requesting amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. Overtime spent to date is related to normal contract obligations, one member requiring duty injury coverage, military activation drills, and three recent residential fires. Overtime funds needed for the remainder of the fiscal year will be used for the above with the addition of retirement vacancies, along with normal vacancies such as sick, personal, and vacation time. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions or concerns regarding any of the above, please feel free to contact this office. We, of course, remember recently that the fire chief was down here lamenting a little bit about manpower and, you know, the tests that they are put to. So I'm sure that this overtime funds is sorely needed and to meet our obligations under our contracts. So it would be my position, Madam President, to grant C-58, and I'd ask you for your position as well as the other member of our committee.
Thank you. Council Badanza, I would be in agreement, and I would ask Council Angelini.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make it unanimous.
So you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-58. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting, please signify in the usual manner. And seeing a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Chair, do you have an order?
I do. C-58, order that the sum of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account, same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard, moving for the adoption of the order, all those in favor, please, it has to be roll call? This will be done by roll call, starting first with Council Frida.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Roll call for the...
C-58.
Fire overtime. C-58, on the public finance, page eight. It's a roll call. It's your turn to say yay or nay.
Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Deacon?
Yay.
Council Brady?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Arndt?
Yay.
And Council Badanza?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as a yay, a vote of seven to zero. C-58 has been granted.
He wants you to go to...
Now, we're gonna jump over to...
Public service.
The clerk of public service, are you ready to report?
We're jumping to the...
Council Frida, are you ready to report?
I'd move to waive the reading. I don't think we have to, because it's already been read once, right?
You don't have to.
So, just summarize, Council Frida just wants to summarize which poll is which.
Okay, my page is missing, yeah.
Page 11 of the agenda.
42-22, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Nashville Street, National Grid, to install one jointly owned pole on Nashville Street beginning at a point approximately 180 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Nashville Street and Lawrence Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction. Installing P-32-50 with 40 feet C2 to provide service to 280 Nashville Street. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location and form permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herein, marked Nashville Street, Lemmister, Massachusetts. Also, the permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways, for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Yet petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles with a fire, police, telegram, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it extensively for municipal purposes. Poll, Council Brady, but my recommendation would be to grant.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant Madam Clerk, couldn't this just be a signify in the usual manner?
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. Opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, 42-22 has been granted. Madam Clerk of Public Service, perhaps rather than reading this in entirety, you may just want to summarize it based on the location of the poll.
I think we're supposed to read them for our file, aren't we?
We have to read it.
We have to.
Read it once during the public hearing, and then when we go back to it, it can be summarized, because we've met our legal requirement. But it's up to you guys.
I'll leave that up to you.
As much as I don't want to read it, I think we should read it, though.
That's fine. It's up to you.
They should be, because if people weren't listening at the public hearing, they're not hearing it now, and if they have an objection to the poll, don't know what we did.
That's okay. Certainly, thank you, Council Frida.
Believe me, I'd rather not read it, but 43-22, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Grandview Avenue, National Grid, to install three jointly owned poles on Grandview Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 20 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of U Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northeast direction. Install pole number 4-50 and anchor on the northeastern side of Grandview Avenue between existing poles 3 and 4. Continue 125 degrees northwest and install new pole number 9 and two anchors on the northeast side of U Street. Continue 105 degrees west and install new pole number 10 and anchor on the northwest side of U Street. New poles are required for electrical service in three new homes being built on new section of U Street. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location and form permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Grandview Avenue, Lemmister, Massachusetts. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Yet petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles with a fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Again, we had a public hearing this evening, no objections, the hearing was closed, and we'll ask you to check with the third member of public service.
Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is to grant.
And Council...
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Services Committee in favor of granting 43-22. Is there any further discussion? All those, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero, 43-22 has been granted. Madam Clerk, can we add on these, on the previous one, 42-22 and 43-22, and then 44, that David Cormier, the president, is abstaining from the votes?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Council Frida, 44-22.
44-22, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Field Road, National Grid, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Field Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Abbott Avenue and Field Road, and continuing approximately 15 feet in a south direction. Relocating pole number one with 40 feet C2 approximately 20 feet west from existing pole one. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location and form permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan here filed herewith, marked Field Road, Lemmister, Massachusetts. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Yet petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles with a fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Again, we had a public hearing this evening, no objections, and actually had someone speak in support, and my recommendation would be to grant. I would ask that you check with the third member of the committee.
Council Brady?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 44-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. A vote of seven to zero, 44-22 has been granted. And I see Mr. President back for 45-22.
Okay, thank you very much. Actually, I'm gonna go back to items under finance, if that's okay, unless you want to finish the last one.
Doesn't matter to me.
Sure, let's, let's do that last one now, and then we'll go back to finance. Thank you.
45-22, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate pole, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pioneer Drive, National Grid, to install one single owned pole on Pioneer Drive, beginning at a point approximately 815 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Orchard Hill Park and Pioneer Drive, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction. Installing P-12 with 40 feet C2 to provide service to 130 Pioneer Drive. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location and form permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Pioneer Drive, Lemmister, Mass. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections of such poles in buildings as each of said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Yet petitioner agrees to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point on each of said poles with a fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Again, we had a public hearing this evening. Hearing was closed, and the, no one spoke in favor or in opposition, and I, my recommendation would be to grant, and I would ask that you check with the third member of the committee.
Thank you very much. Counselor Frida. Counselor Brady.
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 45-22. Is there any discussion? Counselor Cormier.
Just quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Fontaine for coming and sticking through the entire meeting. It is helpful to have him here to answer questions, so that's all I wanted to add.
I agree. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 45-22, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 45-22 has been granted. Thank you very much, Counselor Frida. There was a lot of reading this evening. Now we're going to bounce back to items under Finance, C-59. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes. C-59. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $250,000 be transferred to the DPW Sidewalks and Curbing account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account regarding the annual sidewalk repair program. For the last number of years, the mayor has dedicated $250,000 of capital expenditure to rebuilding our sidewalks, and no different this year. I did get the mayor's office to send over a list of the various streets where sidewalks are being repaired. Those are Central Street, Spruce Street, Main Street, Washington Street, Maryam Ave., First Street, Spruce Street, and Second Street. It would be my position to grant C-59, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini.
Having recently received a call from a constituent on the sidewalks, I proudly support.
Thank you very much. As Ward Counselors, we know it's very important work. So we've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-59. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-59, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-59 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes. Order the sum of $250,000 be transferred to the DPW Sidewalks and Curbing account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-59 has been adopted. Moving on to 41-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes. 41-22. Greg C. Chapter Lane, purchasing agent, requests to enter into a six-year contract for risk management services. There's a letter supporting this petition authored by Mr. Chapter Lane and the Treasurer and Collector, Mr. Redmond, dated March 4, 2022. Dear Honorable Members of the Lemminster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for risk management services for the Treasurer's office for a period of six years. The current contract will expire this fiscal year. In anticipation of the expiration, I am in the process of preparing a quest for proposals to secure these services for the next six years, said services to begin July 1 of this year. Per Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30b, Section 12b, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the City Council must pass a majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. Risk Management Services are advisory services for the city's property, liability, and workers' compensation policies and procedures. The hired specialist advises the city on all things insurance-related, negotiates the purchase of said policies, brokers resolutions of disputes between the city and the insurance underwriters as they arise, and manages the city's insurance safety committee. For over the past 20 years, the city has issued three-year contracts for this service, but the familiarity from years of outsourcing this service, of how the service and related vendors operate, allows us the confidence now to move into a six-year contract period. The six-year contract length will allow the city to retain the same vendor over a long period of time so that the vendor is in place to handle all the city's insurance issues. As with all our extended-year contracts, this will allow less disruption in the Treasurer's office operations, as well as the city receiving better pricing for the long-term contract versus a shorter time period. This petition must be voted upon now as I prepare to issue the new bid contract, as I must know what time period, contract length, I will be able to structure the contract around. I would respectfully advise the City Council to vote in favor of extending the Risk Management Services contract term to cover a six-year period. If you have any questions concerning this issue, please do not hesitate to contact myself or the Treasurer. I did also have a discussion about this with the comptroller, who informed me that the number of companies out there that are offering this service are not significant. There are not a great many of them. This particular company has done a great job for us for a while, and, you know, it's very important because of how much self-insurance we do to have this type of advisor. So, Mr. President, it would be my position to grant 41-22, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 41-22. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 41-22, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 41-22 has been granted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, 20-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Mr. President, this was given further time at our last meeting. As you may recall, the Planning Board has established a subcommittee that will be meeting on April 4 to delve into this matter a little deeper. They hope to have some kind of a resolution shortly thereafter. So it would be, let me also note that we have a public hearing scheduled for, what was it?
April 11.
April 11 at 6:50 p.m. So having said that, I would once again recommend further time.
Okay.
And I'd ask you to poll the members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor of further time.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree with further time.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant further time to 20-22. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting further time, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 20-22 has been given further time. Moving on to the reappointments on page nine. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report? And if there's no objection, these are reappointments, I believe. Madam Clerk, we can take these and block, if that's okay, if nobody has any objection. Okay. You may proceed, and we'll take them all and block.
Madam Clerk, would you be inclined to read these?
No. I don't think.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Michelle Hagstrom, 152 Sacramento Drive, to the Board of Appeals, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Nicole Pear, 29 Oakwood Hollow Road, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Peter Lanza, 16 Depot Square, to the Board of Health, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of John Dickens, 59 Rustic Drive, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Patricia Valley, 16 Arrowhead Road, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Phyllis Gagné, 34 Fairmount Street, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Donna Smith, 161 Spruce Street, number 411, to the Council on Aging, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Robert Wilson, 19 Brown Ave., to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Louis Longenecker, 90 Dubson Circle, to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Dean Carlson, 28 Iris Road, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Thomas Dalen, 48 Judy Drive, to the Disability Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Joanne Donfro, 231 Helena Street, to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Susan Schalafos Zephyr, 900 West Street, to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April 15, 2025. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Thomas Kerrigan, 56 Saddlebread Drive, to the Planning Board, term to expire April 15, 2027. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of Teresa McEwen, 500 Brooks Pond Road, to the Recreation Commission, term to expire April 15, 2025.
Mr. President, it would be my position that we grant the reappointments to all the previous requests as read by the clerk.
Okay. And I will check with members of your committee. Counselor Arndtger.
I agree.
Counselor Deacon.
I agree.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant all of these reappointments. Is there any discussion?
To the Chair, to the Ways and Means Chair, did you have a chance to check on attendances? I mean, we had a couple of committees along the way that we had to address for people just not showing up and not having quarrels, and I think most of these people aren't here. We all know, and are pretty dedicated and responsible, but, and I'm not talking about somebody that misses one or two or three or four meetings. I'm talking about somebody who just doesn't show up.
Did I, I, Counselor Frida, I did not have the opportunity to reach out. I did speak with the, I spoke with Ms. Weeks in the mayor's office and asked, based on their request for the reappointments, if these were people that are showing up, doing what they need, you know, we need them to do and to appear, and they gave, Ms. Weeks gave me any, every indication that these are people that are showing up.
Yeah. I think sometimes the mayor's office doesn't even know. We didn't, until we had a problem one time, Gil Feckley started checking because we had, and I think Counselor Brady's had his time, you know, and, you know, knowing what just reaction to some committees can be sometime, and I think we just need to pay closer attention to people showing up. That's all.
Oh, thank you. And I will, I will look into that. I will address that, and perhaps I will be able to report on that for our next meeting, if we can put that under old business. I will make some calls, see what I can find out, and see what it looks like, and I can report back at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Are we all, any other discussion? Counselor Brady.
I just want to publicly thank our health director for coming to the meeting and showing support for the reappointments.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of.
There's somebody that shows up.
Okay. Yeah.
Roll call.
Okay. So we will do this in a roll call, if there's no other discussion, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndtger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. All of these reappointments have been confirmed. Moving on to 46-22. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report on that one?
I am. Mr. President, I did review the, again, to renew the license. They need a proof of the application, their DOR information, their tax information, their liability insurance. I found all that in. The referrals are in, and they are in good standing. So it would be my recommendation that we renew the license on 46-22.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation of the Chair, Counselor.
Arndtger.
Sorry.
I agree.
I'm bouncing around so much, I forget what I'm doing. Counselor, Counselor Deacon.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant 46-22. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to note, this application really caught my eye, the note, no sales for employees. You've got to love that business model. It's on the front page. So wonderful. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 46-22, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 46-22 has been granted. Now we are going to jump to page 14, which is the last page. We are under new business. We have two first readings of an ordinance, and we'll begin with the first one, which is 39-22. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. 39-22. Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, requests a new section of the City of Lemminster revised ordinances, Chapter 1, Section 1.12, regarding an electioneering policy for the City of And I will read this ordinance. City of Lemminster in the year 2022, in ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lemminster as follows, amending Chapter 1 by inserting a new section, 1.12, of the revised ordinances entitled electioneering.
Counselor Angelini.
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you. I'm so sorry. I just wanted maybe shorten your time for you. Mr. Riley never sent us back these in ordinance form, so the only thing we can do with them tonight is give them further time, so that way you don't have to waste time reading them again.
All right. Fine. And that, the same thing goes for the next one as well?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah, of course.
All right. In light of that.
Thank you very much. I didn't realize that.
Mr. President, I'll be recommending further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza.
I agree.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay. So in light of the fact that we don't have these back in ordinance form, they're requesting further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 39, the first reading of 39-22, further time, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 39, the first reading of 39-22 has been given further time. Moving on to 24-22.
24-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans, same situation exists. So we're still waiting on the city solicitor, Mr. President. So at this time, I would once again request further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in agreement.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation to give the first reading of 24-22, further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, signify in usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, 24-22 has been given further time. Moving on to old business, we have an update on City Council Petition C-56, which is the civil service exemptions, and C-89, home rule petition that was sent to Representative Higgins and Senator Cronin in 2021. Counselor Badanza, I believe you had asked about these and requested that they be on the agenda, so I will, I will yield the floor to you.
The clerk did, in fact, send our representative an email, and the representative Higgins did, in fact, respond, and I'll just read it. It's not that long. Clerk Huffman, thank you for your email. H-3756 is currently before the House Committee on Third Reading, the last step before a vote in the House. After passage in the House, it will move on to the Senate. I am very hopeful that we'll be passing the legislation in the House shortly and before the end of the legislative session. As we have been awaiting final recommendations of the Special Legislative Commission to study and examine the civil service law, I am thankful for the opportunity to serve as an appointee of House Speaker Mariano on the commission. I have attached the final recommendations of the commission chairs, which will be voted on tomorrow by the full commission. You are welcome to share these documents with the City Council, as I have heard from a number of them regarding the progress of the commission's work. All the best, Natalie. So I guess where we are is we're waiting for the Chairman of the Third Reading Committee, a very powerful committee in the House, to move this to a vote, and hopefully that'll be in the near future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Badanza, does anybody have any questions or discussion about this item? Okay, seeing none, if there's any other old business, nothing's on the agenda. Counsel Frida?
Yes, to the chair, to the Finance Chair, about a month ago, I think, I asked about, had a constituent ask about that committee that, do you have any information on that?
I did talk to the mayor about it. He did tell me that there is a committee, it does exist, there are citizens on the committee, and they meet to establish, you know, what tax aid they're going to give. I asked him for some further detail information so I could report. I haven't heard back from him yet with respect to the details, but I'll remind him.
So, he can tell us who was on, who's on the committee?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
What's up? Okay, thank you. If there's no other old business, any items under the community calendar? Counsel Frida?
Just a couple things. Tomorrow is National Vietnam Veterans Day, it's actually a federal holiday. There is a program that will be happening at 3 o'clock at the Veterans Hall tomorrow afternoon, anybody who's interested in going. Also, I hope everybody has gone by Central Street, and I can't believe you neglected to say Central Street by the police station sidewalk. That was a big part of that funding, but the steel is up, which makes it look like a building ready to happen almost. So, we'll know more once all the steel is finally in place, and I think they're talking about maybe a little ceremony just to, just to celebrate the fact that it's actually happening. So, all good.
I thought I did mention Central Street. I admit, it was pretty rapid, and I went through that quickly. But I think I did.
I do like the idea of a ceremony, maybe we can all sign a beam, sign one of those steel beams, and however many years from now.
It actually came in early, which was a real shock to everybody.
That's good.
Thought it was going to be hard to find.
Right. It's well underway. Good work to everybody that worked on that project. I know, Counsel Frida, you were on that committee, and so many other people in our community that worked very hard to bring that to reality. So, is there anything else under the community calendar? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Angelini, Counsel Badanza seconded. All those in favor, by a vote of eight to zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.